I would like to call to order the regular council meeting on Monday, May 14th, 2018. Roll call, please. Mr. Lauer.
This is Merrill.
Present.
Mr. Steigl.
Present.
Mr. Harkary.
Here.
Mr. Burquist.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
We can all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our council meeting held April 23rd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Any additions, deletions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things I'm sorry to...
No apologies necessary.
Under the minutes 5G, and I said these to Mr. Lauer earlier about the award for traffic signals, I just asked for a correction on the first sentence of the second paragraph. I actually asked whether the company retained ownership of their design documents, not the information that was stated. Second, 5H, a correction also, the question I made was an observation that the bids vary widely, so I was asking if the contractors bid the same scope of service. I wasn't asking specifically what was stated in the minutes.
Okay.
The last thing I'd like to clarify, and perhaps you all can recall, under 7D for the CASO fire equipment...
7D.
It's the idea that they wanted us to abate the liquidated damages. And the way the minutes were written, I wasn't sure what we had agreed to. It was my understanding we agreed that damages would stop while the truck was in transit, or while it was getting the equipment installed, and then it would start again while it was being delivered. So I just wanted to clarify.
Sure. And just to clarify that, the truck has now arrived. Right now, the fire department is determining where they would like that equipment to be mounted. And then the truck with the equipment will go to CASA's local retail establishment, and that's where that will be installed. And what council agreed was that during that period of time, while the truck was sitting in our station and that equipment was being determined, we would not charge liquidated damages for that period.
Okay. That's what I understood, but it didn't really sound like it would resume again until it was finally delivered back.
Yes. And I will clarify, once it leaves this location, then the liquidated damages begin again. I will clarify that in the minutes.
Thank you. And one last thing. One thing I noticed with some of the quotes that we award, the amounts aren't always stated in the minutes. Is that something we should do consistently, or is that just something based on what the council person actually states in their motion?
It's what is stated in the motion, but you know what, in terms of the recommendations that come from the minutes, I will make an attempt to include that in the future, so it's easier if somebody wants to incorporate that into the motion.
Thank you. Just so that we have everything documented. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anything else? Anybody else? I'm assuming that the motion to approve is with the changes made?
So.
So is the second.
So is the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. That sounds like 7-0. Next item is special reports, and tonight, we do have one, and that is from the illustrious Montour Trail people. So...
Hello, Mr. ...
Move forward.
Hello, I'm Mark Gemgrind, president of the local Friends of the Trail group. I don't know how illustrious I am, but I'll try to keep my report fairly short. I did send for the docket...
More illustrious.
I did send the full report and plan for 2018, which I'm not going to go through. The only two things probably worth mentioning, unless you have a questions, are that we're going to put in the Montour Trail year sign in Peters Township, because I convinced the board that it was close to both Allegheny and Washington Counties, and it was a good place to put it because of high traffic. So we'll be putting that on the Montour Trail in Peters Township. Secondly, it's probably worth mentioning that we're planning to pave the Greer Tunnel. That's the tunnel before you go to across Shartiers Creek. It's about a $45,000 project. We have one grand of $20,000 in hand, waiting for two, but we'll, two more to come in, probably start later in the season. We are starting work connecting to the east. I'd call it the west half of what used to be the Consol Corridor in South Park Township. It will get us to the entrance road to that old research park. And we will have a connection based on a meeting just this past week with the Port Authority to the T Station there.
Excuse me. Before you go on, is that the one that Upper St. Clair was talking about, getting a connection?
No, that's, that connection would go from near Shartiers Creek before you go into Lawrence, back along Shartiers Creek to the Upper St. Clair Park, whatever that's called.
I wasn't ever sure exactly which one. So thank you for clarifying.
Well, when someone gives a, lays out a plan, I can bring it and show it to you, but I haven't seen that laid out yet.
So on the section behind the old library elementary, I think that's what currently, you know, it ends there?
Oh, it ends at Pleasant Street, yes.
So it's like, I think, 1.42 miles now to the connection is up or down?
Yes. This will start there, and it will end where you used to come off, well, you still come off Brownthor Road into the old Consol Research Center. We have the right-of-way pass that to Wood Street, but a developer bought the property from Consol, and we're working with the developer to incorporate the trail into the development.
Okay. I thought the essential, you guys were coming the other way. So here we're from Library Elementary. So it'll go right across Pleasant?
It will go at a very sharp angle across. It's not straight across, but downhill and across, yes. I added Bethel branch extension planning, only because I was asked that question at my similar presentation to Parks and Rec. And we are slowly acquiring right-of-way to attempt to extend the Bethel branch. It's going to take years, but we're working diligently on it. Overall, on the trail, we are still making the connection to Coriopolis to go from mile zero to mile minus .8, I guess, until we decide to change mile markers. We did a follow-up to our 2016 Trail User Survey, just got finished about two months ago. And I put a couple of slides in the docket. I'm not planning on going through it at all here in detail. One thing we noticed that was, even though trail maintenance and surface conditions rated just as good as they did two years ago, we had a lot more comments about them. We still need to understand the comments better, but we think a lot of it has to do with the Panhandle Trail being paved. And in comparison, the crushed limestone isn't necessarily as favorable to some trail users. Runners still like the crushed limestone. We got a lot of feedback this year from the survey about trail etiquette and complaints from various members of the walking, running, biking, dog walking community, usually pointing fingers at each other. And we're taking steps to address that by putting etiquette signs on every half-mile marker along the trail. Eight different etiquette signs that will remind people of the things they're supposed to do, like stay right where when you pass, pick up after your dog, et cetera, et cetera. And maybe it'll make a benefit, maybe it won't. And that's it. So I will answer any questions you have?
I have two, I guess. I'm either overly aggressive and deleting mail that I don't instantly write down, but this particular report, I don't know if it's gone out in the U blast yet, or did I just miss it?
It's in the docket.
It's in the docket.
I know it's in the docket, but we typically get a year newsletter all the time, I guess.
Oh, you're not getting the newsletter?
Yeah, we get the newsletter.
I didn't get the newsletter.
I didn't either.
That's how it should be.
This news in this report was new to me at this point. And the other question I have, and I ask Michelle this, it's only because I fell in love with the whole of your e-bikes. What topic, or is there any discussion of considering them to be illegal?
Yes, there is. I did bring this up with Parks and Rec. Is that how you had this conversation with Michelle? I was trying to find out if the township was, first of all, being asked questions about it from trail users, because we get a lot of questions to our office in Bridgeville asking, are e-bikes legal? And we have two policies. One says no unauthorized motorized vehicles, and then we have a policy which basically says you can't use e-bikes unless you're mobility impaired. The two policies don't talk to one another. On the other hand, we're finding that a lot of other local trails are recognizing that, number one, you can't tell the difference between, I believe they're called Class 1 e-bikes, which are pedal assist, and another bike. Because they, as long as they're being pedaled, they look like a bike. The batteries are getting smaller and smaller, and very difficult to see. So from a practical standpoint, we know that they're there. So we've been asked, I say "we" now, I'm chair of the Operations Committee for the Montour Trail Council. We've been asked to look at the e-bike policy and make a recommendation to the Montour Trail Council. We have not done that yet. If council has feedback you'd like to give me regarding that, I'd be happy to take that into account.
My exposure had been last summer when I was in Europe, and they were the rennes who approached there. And I got on the first one. Oh, wow, this is kind of neat. And, you know, they are very similar. I don't know, everybody I talked to gets concerned about speed, but in reality...
Speed and driving safely is a big issue, yes.
Yeah. I don't know that, at least my observations were, does bike run any faster than, you know, people that like to go speedy on the other bike?
Some friends of mine were recently on the newly paved Panhandle Trail, and actually a lot of the pedal bangers now are riding the Panhandle Trail because it's paved. They can go much faster in thinner tire bikes. And my friend was one of the pedal bangers, and he said that they were passing e-bikes left and right because they don't really go much faster than 15 miles per hour, and they were traveling 20. So speed is an issue more, I think, than whether you're using something that has, is assisting.
I would agree 100% with that.
So we're trying to get all this into something that's coherent and consistent and make a recommendation to the Montour Trail Council.
But whatever the Montour Trail Council does, doesn't change the rules on Arrowhead Trail, and that really...
It does not.
With or without the Montour Trails Council, you set that rule. So what council does could be different than the Montour Trail Council.
And our policies right now on mobility impaired are a little bit different, but they're very, very consistent, actually. And from a practical standpoint, we know that they're there now. And it's really difficult to even determine whether many of them are e-bikes. And if it's an e-bike and you haven't pushed the button to use the electric motor, is it still an e-bike?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. There's always Mark, and it never ceases to amaze me how diligent you guys are with the trail and the money that you're able to raise. I think it's just absolutely great. So, thank you.
Thank you all for your support as well.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a period of where audience comments, you're limited to five minutes to talk about a non-agenda item. That would be an item not on the agenda. So is there anyone who would like to speak this evening during the audience comment period? Ah, there we go. You first. Just take your name and address.
My name's Conrad Wallace, live at 105 Trotwood Drive. I've had a problem ongoing for more than two years now in regard to construction of a black cyclone fence in a neighbor's yard. Make it clear, I didn't complain about that black fence initially. However, my neighbor, which I'm not going to mention because I've been in contact with most people here, my commissioner and Mr. Zook, Mr. Law. The problem is, is my fence continually gets broke by this man. He's digging right on a property line, over the property line. He has moved his survey stakes, and about two weeks ago, he broke off four or five bottom pickets from my white vinyl fence. Just so we're clear, my fence was put in with permission of the township permits, whatever any developer approved it, and there's whoever else I had to get a permit from. And the gas company approved where it went to, because there's a corner of my property has an easement on it from the gas company. But my biggest concern is, we all know this, and I feel that the township has let me down in their, I'll use a word I've been told, fiduciary responsibility, to protect me and my family and my property. Okay, as we speak now, we got a gigantic garden fence. It's black cyclone, who knows, six foot or so. But besides that, what happens is, because this man built this fence, and he put in three or four wooden beds, the water, drain water would come down, hit the beds, and pond on his water, well, sorry, on his property. So what he's done, he's trenched around all the perimeter of his fenced area, big black area, plus all by my fence, and he runs it all along the property line down to the end of my fence, which my fence is three foot from the edge of the property. Now, Mr. Zook's been there a few times, and he tells me different things, that this is going to happen, he's going to talk to the homeowner, the other homeowner's going to do this, this, or this. And we all know there was a conference call with Mr. Burquist, Mr. Law, Mr. Zook, and Mr. Somatis about three weeks ago. And on air, I was promised that something, action would be taken. That action has not been taken by the property owner, and I still get water.
I don't think that's entirely true, Mr. Wallace. I think the property owner did comply with our request to extend his drain.
It was extended to the end of the property.
And that is what we agreed to.
To the end of the property line, yes. To the end of the property line. He didn't do that.
I don't recall...
No, he didn't do it. I just looked today.
...the end of the property line.
Yeah, because he was...
Mr. Law, your memory is better than mine?
Well, convenient. What has happened here is that a person, Mr. Wallace's neighbor has a fence, and what he has put in is a landscaping strip under that fence, that is, it's a small channel that's full with stone. If you look at it, it's the kind of thing that we have in Peterswood Park, to make it easier to maintain the lawn against the fence. This is not a drainage channel. It doesn't require a permit. It does not, its intent is not to transport stormwater. We do not regulate it. And, you know, the problem in the neighborhood is that not everybody gets along. So when you talk about the damage to the fence and things like that, that is not a township issue. That's a private issue between two property owners, and we really don't have a role in settling that. The solution to that is elsewhere. It's at the magistrate's court or somewhere else. It's not with the township. So, you know, to the extent that what's being described is, are in attention to his situation, it has been explained to Mr. Wallace on many occasions that this is the township's responsibility. And so he, Mr. Wallace is not happy with that answer, but that answer's been consistent. And I think it's also accurate.
No. Let me interrupt. I mean, I have 42 seconds. If you want to extend my five minutes, we can do that. There's your ordinance, number 315-19, stormwater drainage. If you read that, it says if you have a ponding on your property, and you remove that ponding by running the water off on someone else's property, like what's happening to me, that's a violation of the ordinance. And that's what I'd like the township to do. I want them to enforce their ordinances, and if I don't read it right, then they'd better re-change it, reword the order. And what you describe is not exactly 100% either.
It's exactly what's out there.
Now, that channel's six or eight inches wide, this deep, and when it rains, that water runs down that channel, because my property is sloped like this, his is this way, and all the water that used to come down on maybe 50 foot of his property down toward the back, now comes all the way around this way, this way, down parallel to my fence, down into here, and it bubbles and percolates all the way down there, and it just bubbles there until the rain subsides. You've never been over there when it's pouring down rain. And like Mr. Zook and like Mr. Somatis, is that...
Somitis.
Somitis told me, this is one of the worst springs we ever had. Total water everywhere. Well, that's just exactly, well, just increases my problem, because it's a bad spring. Okay, now, I've had my tree down there, had to get rid of that, because it just rotted from the water. I didn't do anything. It's been five, six years. Two years ago, before any of this was started, I had Mr. Sylvester come to my house, and he walked, I'm not sure if Mr. Somitis was there or not at that time, and I told him, this guy's digging too close to the property line, he's going to damage my fence, da-da-da-da-da, and the township sent one or two letters, and it just keeps going on, and no one stops. Okay, now...
Well, again, as we have had numerous conversations about...
You and I talked to us.
Yeah.
That's one, that's a couple.
I'm sympathetic to your plight with you and your neighbor, but the ultimate resolution of it, as Mr. Lauer said, is to take it to the magistrate. But from, the reason I asked you to come here tonight is so that we had an opportunity for everyone on council to understand that this issue that you have is between you and your neighbor. And the township has done everything, Mr. Somitis has been there several times, and the ordinance that you are outlining, to be honest, I don't know that ordinance from another one.
Well, I mentioned that number two a week ago.
If we can probably get some clarification for him as to this ordinance, what is it, 31?
We can once again provide clarification as to what the meaning of the ordinance is, but it will not change what our position is, is that there's not a violation or a concentration of water flows. But we've done this before, and I have no problem on doing it again. And we will compose a letter and provide it to Mr. Wallace, as well as council.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Are both of the fences exactly on the property line?
As far as I know, when my fence was put in, the township supervised the installation of the fence, gateway engineers pinned it, was it alley and engineers were there to verify? It's close. And what's happening, and I appreciate your question, and here's why, because all this water flow's been flowing there for years, and my major concern, even before we start digging the trenches, is the fence is starting to wobble where all the water accumulates in the corner of the property. Now, I got lawn damage, I got fence damage, I got unhappy situations for me and my family, and I'm here to ask for help. And then if you read this stuff, and you publish this, even on a little calendar that comes, it says, if somebody runs water over your property, that's a violation of the ordinances. So I mentioned that, and though everybody says, read them yourself. So I did. And this one, this was clear cut, my situation. The water flow has been changed, the water runs more across my property than it did it before, and so it's a violation of what's written. Now, if you don't want to do any...
So when you say you're here to get help, what is it that you want us to do?
Well, I would like my yard restored by the property owner.
But that's not something we have the ability to do.
We don't have the ability to do that.
Well, but see, you could have prevented all, a lot of this, because this is a two-year-old problem. Every month or two, when I would call Mr. Law or whoever, they'd say, we'll talk to him, we'll send a letter, or we'll come over again. And a month or two go by, nothing happens. So the neighbor thinks everything's okay, so he keeps elongating his trench. And now he's trenched the whole side of his property. Okay, so that's where the township is.
But you can't do that.
But he can't come over on my property. He can't dig dirt on...
But he's not on your property.
Yeah, he is. Yes, he is.
I don't know if he is or not, but if he is, that's a simple matter between two property owners.
Okay. So let's make it, let's make it real...
He's not really involved in a property line issue.
Well, let's make it real clear here, then, on that issue. Just like Mr. Law told me four times, I think it was your quote, you don't feel that that issue of a neighbor coming on your property is a township ordinance violation. But I want you to say at a meeting, and all these people, so all the people in the Peters Township know, it's your recommendation to go to the civil magistrate or attorney, like you told me, and file a complaint there. I want you to speak clearly.
Oh, clearly. I'll be very clear on this.
Because then I'll get blamed for it.
That's okay. When there is a private property issue that does not involve violation of municipal ordinances, and a resident wants to seek relief, one of the, one of the means of relief available to them is to, is to file a civil action, and it can be pursued at the magistrate's court.
Fine. But that came for you.
Absolutely.
And another thing, just so...
I think I told you the same thing.
Yeah, you told me I could do that. Get attorney, pay the money, see what happens.
I didn't tell you to get attorney. I said I would go to the magistrate's office.
Somebody mentioned it.
But just to be clear, sir, if what you're looking for is something outside of monetary damages, you have to go to the Court of Common Pleas, because the magistrate doesn't have injunctive authority. So if you're looking for an injunction or something of that nature...
I'd like my, I'd like to live...
I shouldn't be giving you free legal...
Well, that's okay.
But...
Well, you know what?
But any, what I'm trying to say is, if you go, if you go to the, if you're looking for money damages from the damage to your property, you can go to the magistrate. If you wanted to repair it, then you have to go to the Court of Common Pleas, because the magistrate can't...
So what Mr. Law just told me was incorrect.
I don't think it was incorrect.
He told you it was correct. There's two different venues you can originate your action. In one, before the magistrate. One, as Mr. Cozer told you, is the Court of Common Pleas.
Okay.
Both civil matters.
Okay. Let's just move on. What are binding force in the ordinance?
That, I told you, we will follow up with.
We will, and I will once again give you a written opinion with regard to whether or not we believe there's a violation of the ordinance. I do not believe there's a violation of the ordinance.
We don't think there's a violation.
How can you say that when you're not over there when it's raining, or when you see the water come? I have a video in my pocket we can, we can put up here, and we can watch the water percolating down the trough that's never been there before. Do you want us to do that?
No, I don't think we need that.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes, sir.
One last question. Besides talking to Mr. Burquist and Mr. Zook and Mr. Somitis, have you and the neighbor had a conversation about this? Does he realize what he did?
Well, let me tell you this. I'll answer you the latest conversation, okay? I've talked to his wife last Saturday, I believe it was, because she was walking the dog, and I was going over to another friend of mine's, if you will. And I talked to her as nice as I could, and I told her my, my problems. And the only thing we agreed to do was...
Disagree.
If there's any communication that needs to go back and forth, she would come to my house to talk to me, and if I have a problem, I can go talk to her. We'll leave her husband out of it. That was the synopsis of everything.
Well, I'd say that's a big step in the right direction.
At least there was some back and...
Pardon me, ma'am?
At least there was some back and forth.
Well, here's, here's the reason why that occurred, is because, I lost my track, but around May 4th, the man broke off four or five spokes off the bottom of my fence. So I went over there like a normal person, rang the doorbell. He comes, starts screaming at me, slammed the door in my face. I says, if you don't come out here and talk about when you're fixing my fence, I'll call the police. He said, go ahead, slammed down his little living room door for lack of a window, sorry. So I called the policeman. Policeman stood 20 minutes in my house and looked at my broken fence. I says, you can't glue that. And the policeman, whatever, maybe I'm not quoting him directly, says, you can't glue that much damage. So an hour or so later, or two hours later, I get a call from the neighbor, different now, different attitude, says, I'll replace that whole section of fence for you. I said, fine. I don't know, seven, eight days go by, and that same Saturday, I look out the window, and two guys are leaving my fence area, and they glued on four pieces of picket on the bottom. No new section, okay? And his wife told me, though, that they don't make that type anymore, you know? It's like a classic car. And so now, then they didn't even glue all the pieces on, there was one extra piece. So I told his wife, you know, there's one more. Yeah, we're done.
I'm going to have to interrupt you here.
Yeah, me too.
Again, that's not a township issue.
Well, she, I was, I was asking...
But I appreciate you coming tonight.
Well, I did it at your recommendation.
And letting everyone here...
But again, I think the township has failed me, okay? And maybe they should come over. And I'm tired of hearing the same thing from these people. Oh, it rains, that's why you get water in your yard. We all know that. Like a couple of you people up there, you all, a couple of you are engineers. Whoopie, so am I. I mean, let's face it. We all know water runs downhill.
All right.
I just would point out for the record, though, that I looked up that 315.19...
Yes, yes.
And it does say that drainage of roofs, this is under the, whatever that's the chapter is called, property maintenance, it does say that drainage of roofs in paved areas, yards and courts and other open areas on the premises shall not be discharged in a manner that creates a concentrated flow onto adjacent or adjoining properties. So technically... manner that creates a concentrated flow onto adjacent or adjoining properties. So, technically, I don't care what you call that little trench-
It doesn't do that.
If it does that, it could be a property maintenance violation, so, but I don't know, I've never seen it. I'm just saying that there is some support for what he's saying.
And I want to ask you something. I want to ask you a personal question, or one that seems to be bothering me. Do you have any outside contact with these people that we're referring to, besides township business? Are you involved with him anywhere of shape or form, besides Peters Township?
Because it sure seems like it.
No, but that's an inappropriate question.
Well, it could be inappropriate, but it sure seems like you don't want to do anything.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Okay, well, what do we-
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to jump up here to the podium?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be-
Next door to Mr. Wallace.
That's what I should say. I said, "This is the neighbor."
He lives close, but not next door. I'm Rick Beinhauer. I live on Just About Road. And my purpose here tonight, and I did speak to Mr. Law prior to the meeting, is to make sure that council is aware of a very dangerous situation we have on Just About Road with the potholes that exist. It's absolutely-
It's very bad.
Horrible. I was almost involved in a head-on crash there yesterday. And, you know, Mr. Law said it's not the township's maintenance position, I understand that. He said he was going to drive down there tomorrow, see for himself, and then work with Pendot. But I felt it was behoove it upon myself to make sure that the council was aware of how terrible this is, and I'm just fearful that there's going to be, there's going to be an accident of some kind.
No, you're right. You're totally right, and-
If it's that bad, Paul, just send him a letter. Like, that's what we did on Sugar Can. The neighbor's there, and they fixed it.
Yeah, I want to go down and take a look at it. We will put Pendot on notice. I have a meeting coming up with the district executive. We can make that part of the meetings agenda.
I mean, you know, it was a bad winter, I'm sure they've got-
I'm totally understanding, but this is a dangerous situation.
But it is.
I don't want anybody to get injured, including myself.
East McMurray Road's not much better.
No, it's not the best either. But that's my whole thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forth? All right, seeing none. I would like to just bring, one, we have a guest this evening, Mr. Stephen White. Spell that W-H-Y-T-E. Mr. White is the principal of St. John's Anglical School in our little village of Placencia in Belize. And Mr. White was a recipient of the Herbert Humphrey Fellowship Program at Vanderbilt University. Spent 10 months there. It's a program sponsored by the U.S. Department of State to help focus on leadership development and professional development, and a mutual exchange of ideas from various countries. And so, Mr. White is here now. The end of the program is he has to spend five weeks at a school district, and he's doing that at Upper St. Clair, because my wife and I do a program at the school through Upper St. Clair, because my wife is the treasurer of Upper St. Clair School District. So, I just wanted to welcome Mr. White. He wanted to come and see local politics and- I think he's going to find it's not much unlike Belize, because right now, Just About Road looks a lot like the road into Placencia used to look like. So, again, thank you for taking the time, Mr. White. Again, you can leave whenever you get bored, which probably will be very shortly.
And congratulations on your- Congratulations. And I guess I want to further my background of knowledge. I've sat next to this guy for a long time. He's talked about Belize, and I never connected the dots, that that was formerly British Honduras. And I forget the year that the name changed, but I guess it's four or five decades ago. But I didn't know that until-
Well, anyhow, Mr. White's staying with me, so we got a house guest, and being empty nesters, it's been a little bit of a challenge.
He's telling you to go home.
Get his dinner.
Not at all. He's very much welcome. He's very much welcome, and he knows that. So, but anyhow, so getting on with the agenda, unfinished business, there is none this evening, so we'll move on to new business. The first of which is appointment to the Peters Township Park and Recreation Board.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Vincent Rappapi to the Peters Township Park and Recreation Board.
Second.
Any comments by members of council? We'll duly note that Mr. Rappapi, Dr. Rappapi, is the representative selected by the Peters Township School District, so-
Does he have a term that we need to be processed up?
It is, it ends, it starts immediately, it ends December 31st, 2020.
All right. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Approved 7-2-0. Next on the agenda, approval-
Mr. Barquist, before you proceed, in deference to a recommendation by the school board, who had another candidate they'd like to appoint, I'll make a motion that we appoint an alternate to the park and rec, Mr. Jim, because-
Well, you know, and I, we may be able to do that, but I've got to go back and look, because there really isn't a provision in the ordinance for that. And if you want, I can check on that and find out whether or not we can do that.
I liked your recommendation. I'll just keep this information on file, because I think if we open that can of worms, then we're going to have to maybe do alternates for the other board members.
We have a motion, but I'm not-
It's up to you.
A motion can carry, because we don't have it set in our ordinance. Is anyone who wants a second? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is approve proposed property tax assessment settlement with SVP Properties LLC for property located at 2917 Washington Road.
This is appeal of the current year's assessment on this property. In 2017, it was valued at $1,590,700. The proposed settlement is for $1,300,000. While this would result in a tax decrease from 2018, the reality is, this is actually a tax increase from before it was reassessed. Because they've already paid their municipal taxes, we would have to refund $471. This agreement has been proposed by the county, by the Susan Key, representative of township, as well as the master, who's in charge of the case. So, it's my recommendation that we settle.
And it's 200, the settlement would be 200,000 above the property owner's appraised value, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve this settlement.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, 7-2-0. Next, an ordinance amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 241, impact fees.
So, we had talked about this previously with council last Thursday. The Traffic Impact Fee Committee was convened. There was a public hearing. There was no audience in attendance at that public hearing, but they did afterwards review the recommendation and unanimously passed a recommendation in a couple of different areas. First, they have recommended that the traffic improvement program capital budget be amended to include the Rolling Hills Drive, which of course is the lane that will service both the high school and the park. Also, to include Waterdam-Galley Road intersection. As you recall, this is the intersection when Primrose was going in that warrants a traffic signal. Also, Valleybrook Road and Beevout Road. Although there was always an improvement that was to be placed in here, Pendot was originally going to pay the entire cost of that. They're now asking for participation from the township, so if this project is going to move forward, it needs to be incorporated into the plan. And in filing, we just recently dealt with Valleybrook Road, a prior lane intersection, so this would incorporate that left turn lane. The other thing that was recommended is that the traffic improvement district boundaries be changed. And where that change occurs is right on the property where the high school and the park is to be located. So, the district line would be amended so that the road that's being proposed would become part of the border, so that money from the northern district and the southern district can be used for the improvement, that improvement, when it's done. There was a recommendation that the fee be adjusted to $1,500, $1,500 per unit from the current level. And then, a change in the appeal process. And as we had discussed before, the appeal process, as it's defined right now, is quite frankly, I think, kind of confusing and difficult to manage. And what we're proposing is that we tighten up the language and create a window in which an appeal can be filed, and also define the length of time over which you actually do the study, so that in fact, it's a fair indication of what the actual traffic is that's going to be occurring. So-
Well, I don't agree with the window, because I think it's too short of a timeframe. I mean, you get, if you get somebody like, for example, you know, Primrose, right? I mean, they may not have that, their business fully operational or up and running at full capacity, so you're going to get, in a short period of time like that, you're going to get a skewed number, right?
No, actually, I'm going to disagree with you. You get, after six months after the final occupancy permit on the unit is issued, you have a 30-day period to file an appeal. And then the township has a 12-month period after that in which to do the study. So, at that point, the building's fully occupied. It's been opened, and there's a pretty good chance it's been open for most of a year, and that's when you're doing the study.
But this doesn't last sooner than six months.
Yeah, after the issuance of the final occupancy.
No later than seven months.
And no later than seven months, you file the appeal. And then, once you file the appeal, the study will commence no sooner than eight months after the issuance of the final occupancy, and no later than 20 months it will be completed. So, one of the things that Ed and I think happens is, under the current arrangement, you just pick some random time, and then suddenly, we're doing a study. It may not be the period of time for usage, based upon the nature of what the business is. In this way, we can pick over a 12-month period, the proper period in which to do the study, to get something that's represented. So, what I've discussed here is both items. I've discussed the ordinance on the impact fees, and also the next item, which is the resolution.
Who was at the meeting, please?
The traffic, well, it was-
The Traffic Impact Fee Committee is Arch Wolser, Jim Goldland, Luke Claxton, and the planning commission. We have two meetings.
I thought you were on the-
No, I'm on the all-in committee.
Yeah.
We have two meetings.
Yes.
All right, we need a motion.
Well, there's two issues, so-
Yes, you need to take action on the ordinance, then you need action on the resolution.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 828, amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 241, regarding impact fees.
Mr. Eggen.
I do think we need to correct the dates.
Those were corrected. Those were, yeah.
All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Passed a 7-0.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution amending the Peters Township Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, but I have no idea what the resolution number is.
05-01-18.
I'll second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
So, one of the things that will be happening with this-
7-0.
Going forward, is that we will be reviewing this annually as part of our budgeting process. So, there's a timeframe that's established within the act, so not this September, but the following September, we will visit this. And our intention is to revisit it each year so that we don't end up like we are right now, with this, trying to catch up, so.
Now, Paul, since you said that Pendot is looking for contribution from us now on the Beevout Road, Valleybrook area, are we going to have any input as to whether that's a roundabout versus a signalized intersection? Because I know before they said, you know, "We're paying for it, this is what you're getting."
No, the decision's already been made on that, and if we're participating, or we aren't participating, it will be a roundabout. If we do not participate, there will be no improvement on that intersection, so.
Well, that's a disappointing thing, because I will stand against that. I don't think that's going to improve the outcome.
It will come back to council.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of Just About Farms Phase 1 Final Plan, as shown on drawings prepared by PVE Engineering, dated April 27th, 2018, for Just About Development LLC.
Before Grant steps up and summarizes the Phase 1 Just About Farms Development, I want to point out that both planning commission and council approved this preliminary master plan back in 2017. Council approved the master plan for Just About Farms on September 25, 2017. Phase 1 Final Plan is consistently approved, preliminary master plan. Grant Shiring is here tonight to walk council through the cause why. You'll point out that the planning commission did at their February 14, 2018 meeting, did recommend council-approved plan, subject to those 13 conditions listed in my report to council.
Are these single-family, I forget, is it a single-family?
Single-family detached patio.
Okay, because I was saying, like, some of these lots are like 0.18 acres. I mean, that's-
They're fairly small lots.
But the numbers changed, sir.
The total number of lots changed. They reduced it down from 54-
I believe we were at 54, now we're at 48 total. Grant Shiring, PVE.
There's been some other changes to the original plan, so please proceed.
Counsel has seen this before, and as we said, it went down in the number of units. The overall layout, though, Mrs. Merrill, I don't believe has changed, unless you want to speak to a specific item that you see. Overall, what we're asking for is approval for Phase 1. The total development is 26 acres. It includes 48 lots. The minimum-sized lot, I believe, is 8,400 square feet. The reason that we did, the reason that we did reduce the number of lots is that so we could include a side entry garage product, rather than having a front-loaded garage.
Not like that.
So, the site's located between Bauer Hill Road and Just About Road. This is the overall Phase 1 and 2. Access off of Just About Road, you come in, there's a traffic island. You come up the hill to a stop intersection. There is another traffic calming median here, and you exit at Bauer Hill.
Okay, the first thing, on the plan that's in our document, there is no traffic calming island at the entrance, so you're saying there really will be one?
There is one, yes.
Is that the raised intersection?
No.
Raised intersection's all about. Raised intersection's located here.
Yeah.
But there is a, there is a entrance median along Just About.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at, that's one of the issues I was asking.
You're looking at the replant for recording. That doesn't show all those improvements. That just shows the planning gets recorded.
That's just the meets and bounds descriptions, yes. So, there will be one included there.
All right.
But overall, within Phase 1, we have 29 lots. We're looking at a total of 8.38 acres of open space. As you can see, the open space is along Just About Road. It's also in the rear of the property. There is a stream that's actually located here. We'll be preserving that. So, overall, the plan meets all the township's minimum requirements for area and bulk. We have received the comment letter. There are no problem with any of the conditions addressing those. Most of them are already complete. We are still waiting for HOP, the full access at Just About Road, but that is in the works, and we expect that soon. We've actually started work on the site now.
Since you asked about, since I asked about the traffic calming, and that's not shown, the other thing I don't see here, but it's referenced in the information, is the cluster mailbox. That still will be included?
Cluster mailboxes is located here, at the end of the call set, yes.
The whole plan?
Yes.
The whole plan?
Yes.
Oh, that's going to make the... The other question I had, on this plan, none of the landscaping shows, and one of the things that we had talked about with this plan was that it would be sort of shielded from the road. Will that be coming to us in the future?
Within the submission to the township, there was a landscape plan. There is a 40-foot buffer located along Just About, as well as a 40-foot buffer along Bauer Hill Road. So that's a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees.
One other question, Mr. Smith. With the development, this is the HOA, and it will be a plan. There's no monument sign identifying the, at least there's not designated identifying the plan.
There will be, there will be, on both Just About and Bauer Hill.
Well, the reason I'm asking is that I didn't know if it was on the developer or if it was on the HOA.
The developer will put the monument signs in.
You're going to have one on the funny chin?
Yes.
The names of the roads were also changed now, or are these the final names?
These are the final names, yes.
What are the names? I didn't want to...
It's Hayfield, Hayfield Lane, and Harvest View Drive.
One last thing, since we just had an issue about property lines. Since this has been readjusted and you've changed, just hoping that going forward, people are very clear about what the property lines are. We've had so many property line disputes coming in front of council and the township. So as they go forward, if we can ensure that homeowners can rely on that, would be helpful.
Okay, I'm going to make a move, a motion that we approve the Just About Farms Phase One Final Plan as shown on drawings prepared by PVE Engineering dated April 27, 2018 for Just About Development LLC with...
Planning Commission.
Subject to, yeah, I'm sorry, subject to the 13, planning commission recommendations, most of which appears to be completed.
Got a second? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven zero. Next item, authorize the appropriate officials to enter into an agreement with Bowser Cadillac for the purpose of establishing a 25-foot utility easement.
So we're just swapping easements. So that we're just swapping...
Yeah, we're adjusting an easement.
So that they can do their, whatever they need to do.
They're going to be...
And they're doing it at their cost.
There you go. You got it.
I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the appropriate officials to enter into an agreement with Bowser Cadillac for the purposes of establishing a 25-foot utility easement, subject to the review and approval of our esteemed solicitor.
I think we've already drafted the easement.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Also seven zero. Award of a contract for the renovation of the Peters Township Fire Station Number One. About time we got this far.
Yes.
Oh, that's a lovely far.
Oh, that's a wonderful, pretty good.
There we go. Eventually get there. As council's aware, the 2018 operating budget included an appropriation for the construction of a fire station, and the amount of money that was appropriated for the actual construction was $250,000. Now, one of the things about this that's different than what our normal method of proceeding is that normally what we would do on projects like this, we would design them one year, we would budget them in the fall, and then we would move ahead. Because of the timing of when Meals on Wheels moved out, that wasn't a possibility. And so we took a best guess at what we thought it would cost to renovate that station, and we missed. Now, the thing that I can tell you that is that when we opened the bids, the spread on the bids are fairly close. Freedom Enterprises, who is the low bidder at $424,200, is a contractor that we have experience with. In fact, they did the renovations in this building, the renovations to this room, as a matter of fact. So we feel confident that we have a good price and we have a good contractor. And one of the things that occurred is that where we may have missed on this in the direction that we would hope we want, the fact of the matter is, on the sliplining project over at Sugar Camp Road, it came in substantially below what we had, had estimated for it. So there is sufficient savings there that if council chooses to go ahead with this project, that we can do it without having to increase the overhaul capital expenditure budget. And it's my recommendation that we go ahead with the project, so...
Well, I move that we award the bid for the fire station number one renovation to Freedom Enterprises at an amount of $424,200.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Of course there is.
Shocked.
Back in 2016, we had Ross Shonner, Sturzner, Kupchak evaluate that, and they identified $128,000 worth of value to the facility based on what Meals on Wheels had done. One of the questions, as part of my fiduciary responsibility, is to ask, are we keeping as much as possible all those things that we then paid Meals on Wheels for theoretically?
Yes, in part, you know, one of the things that they did was this entranceway, there's also additional windows that were not in the building prior to this. There's a partition wall that runs down this side that we're saving. These offices actually currently exist. There were improvements done to the roof, as well as the heating and ventilation system. This handicap restroom has some very slight modifications, but it essentially, it's staying the same. So yes, there was every attempt to utilize the improvements in the structure that were there.
And the last question is, a lot of times, what increases cost are the finishes? Are you guys putting hardwood in there, marble? I mean, is there any way to...
Oh, Grant, Chief Wolf, Grant.
Is there anything related to that that could be...
I don't think there's too many fancy things in there.
No, it's all, it's all drywall and tile.
Carpet squares.
Carpet tile?
Carpet tiles.
Okay. All right, thank you for explaining.
Hey, I have a question. It says something about, something about a compactor, what is it?
Yeah, council, we have previously received...
Show me where it's going to be.
Oh, it's going to be outside the building. It's going to be located up on the, over in here.
So we have a compactor yet?
No, we don't have a compactor. You award this grant, we will shortly have the compactor.
We're going to get a grant for it?
We did get a grant for it.
Oh, well, there you go.
It's a 90% grant.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous on all new business today, seven zero. All right. Next item, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I make a motion that we approve the payroll and bills.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven zero. Anything you want to bring up under correspondence? Perfect. Anything under minutes? Anybody want to... All right, that moves us right to miscellaneous. A disappointing result from this voice on this.
But I don't...
That was because they gave, somebody gave that to us, right?
Yeah, how, how are you that planned? Right, and there's a number of issues. Their attorney, you know, we discussed this, and he wasn't real familiar with the act in looking at the case law, but it's not just keeping it open space. It was a coffee shop, a trail shop, a pedestrian grid, probably parking lot. And the other concern would be, you know, what happens when Mr. Robinson passes away? The idea that the open space is taken care of by the township is, you know, from a resident's standpoint, is some solace that that'll never happen, never be a problem, that we don't have to worry about a new owner maintaining it. But it doesn't appear as though the law will allow it. It's not a preference, you know, it just is what it is.
Could we give them an easement over our property so that he could access his property? Because I think the big impediment that he had in building, remember he came in with a couple of plans that put something there, I forget what it was.
They want to put a restaurant?
A restaurant or something, was just the way it was configured off of, off of Valleybrook. I mean, is there any way we can let him use that little driveway to like maybe just cut over and build the building so it's level down there? That would all be in another lot, or do you think we should look around there?
No, I mean, potentially, I don't know the layout.
I was going to say, what he ran into wasn't that. What he ran into is when they did the traffic study, turning lanes were required for the restaurant. And, and you could make sense out of it when you had a turning lane.
Now, there is a way. I mean, the, the way around this is for us to expend the time and energy to go to, I guess, to meet Judge Emery's, who has Orkans Court, does she still?
Nalens, Judge Nalens.
So to go to Judge Nalens, whether he would care or not, to, for us to get rid of that, at least a portion of the property, and to change its use. There's been a number of cases where municipalities have tried to change use and the court strikes it down every time. But here, if the Court of Common Pleas would change it, what they're, what they were trying to describe in their opinion, their counsel, was that they're keeping it the same, and they're really not. And again, it's, if residents in the township shouldn't have to worry about this ongoing new corporation owning that open space. But if the township wanted to undergo that process, I've not done it, but I don't think it's that complicated. But the manager was concerned about putting any real money into this unless council wanted to do this.
Well, Mr. Smith, you brought up another issue in your narrative, and that's if we invested the money and tried to create this opportunity for someone, a specific business person, wouldn't we have to open it up for bid?
We would.
I mean, we couldn't make a side deal with somebody.
Right, we have, so we would go through this process, or we would potentially open it up for bid and then go through the process, if you want to do that. If we don't have to award the bid, we can say no. But yeah, we have to give everybody a fair shot at that enterprise or in that process. The big concern is the fact that it's not a true sale in that, hey, we're going to keep it just like you are, township, as open space, and to get it, to get around that statute, and they're really not. But again, even if they were, are they really the equivalent of, of the township in the interest now?
And see, my problem is, I, I look at this and I understand that there could be a benefit, but I don't know that that benefit warrants the expenditure of public funds. I don't know.
I, I would agree with that, but on, on, on another element to this, now we have, it's, it's unsightly.
I understand.
It's very unsightly, and I think we ought to look at next year, putting some funds in to clean that up.
And I don't disagree with that.
How can we have his lawyers do it? Have him pay for it?
File a petition and go through that process?
Yeah.
I mean, it's possible. We, you know, I guess somebody's going to have to be on the township's side because if we're petitioning the board to change it, be able to divest ourselves of it.
But we'd still have to open it up for bid, though.
Yeah.
So what incentive do his lawyers have to go, I mean, thank you for doing it for us, now let's open it up to public bid?
And I guess the only flip side could be...
Maybe you could open it up for bid first, and if he's here, you want it, and then it's contingent on us getting it, you know, agreed by the court, and then do it that way. Because it would put his other properties, it would make them more valuable, maybe put them on a tax roll. I mean, they already are, I mean, they're on it for like probably, you know...
At the end of the day, what's going to cost us less? Is it going to cost us less to go through that process, or is it going to cost us less to spend a little bit of money cleaning it up, you know?
Well, then at the end of the day, how much more is this going to open up somewhere? You know, so someone else sees another piece of township property and goes, well, I'd like to add that to mine. I mean, I think we are potentially opening a can of worms.
My, my other big concern is obviously there's a detention facility there.
Well, that's a problem.
And the idea that, I'm sure Mr. Robinson during his lifetime would maintain that and do a wonderful job, and then what happens? How do we get it back? Or, you know, we have all these issues with...
Do you remember what Woody went through when he tried to clean up the end of the property? And I would be fearful that Sir Robinson would have the same kind of an issue where he had...
Regardless, it needs cleaned up. It's unsightly.
Yeah, it's nice if we could like clean up.
What's that then?
It's got to be improved, so...
All right.
Well, we gave it a shot.
And I don't know that you need to take any action. I think we're just, you know, there's not, they just came to you for the, with the proposals. There's really nothing formal before you came this way.
We authorized you to explore it, you know?
Does anyone else have anything under miscellaneous? I do. I mentioned that perhaps we could have some police officers or what have you at the intersection of Thomas and the parking lot for the trail. Perhaps one of our bike officers, you had mentioned, that we explore that.
I have not, but you have that chance tonight, Chief.
Yeah, Chief, I'm just talking about a couple of these locations, and that one, especially at Thomas, you know, entrance to the trail, we have a giant X in the road, and there's also a sign that says, do not block intersection. And since I traverse that intersection all the time, I would say 95% of the people don't pay attention to it. And I think mostly because it's not well-defined with that just the one sign, everyone's sitting there, probably on their cell phones anyhow. I just thought if we could have, once in a while, police officers saying, hey, don't block the intersection. Because it does create a dangerous situation when someone is trying to make the left off, you know, once they enter from East McMurray, and they can't enter the trail parking lot. It backs all the way onto East McMurray, so just, just a thought there.
Try a couple of tickets, let's see.
No, no, not sticks.
Tell them this is the Burke.
Yeah, there we go. All right. I'll remember that, Frank. Anybody else have anything for next agenda, next meeting's agenda?
Can we have an update on the property down there at the end of Mr. Courtney's property? Is that on tonight?
Well, you know what? We can talk about that in executive session, but Mr. Courtney has filed a, a site plan. I don't know whether the, whether Ed's had a chance to go through it to see whether it's complete, but it is to be on the agenda in June for action.
Was he going to work down there? Because I saw a couple, like, some pieces of machinery down there, and it looks like he cut like a little road in there or something.
Yeah, but he's not really done anything on the building, so...
All right, thank you for that update.
Could that be on the next agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, we should be...
Yeah, we, we can have that on the next agenda so we understand whether or not...
Because he didn't make the deadline, right?
He did make the May 10 deadline.
Yeah.
He did.
Yes.
And he provided financial...
It's part of the process.
All right. All right. All right, we are going to have an executive session.
Executive session, there are actually three items we would like to talk to you about. They involve some discussion, and I was going to suggest it might be easier to do that in the caucus.
You want to go to the caucus room?
Yes.
It's really hot in there.
Yeah, let's just do it in there.
We can try.
You want to go?
I think we needed, I need your attention. If we can do that here, that's fine, but...
You get our attention better in there?
Yes, I think we do.
And we won't go to the caucus room. That leaves all you can hang out here.
Well, actually, you can close the meeting because we're not taking it further than these...
The meeting is adjourned.